Okay, five. Okay, this is a 6:00 PM public hearing on the zoning text amendment replacing the entirety of the Gearheart zoning ordinance, section 3.10 flood hazard overlay zone with text implementing the Oregon model floodplain management ordinance, including endangered species act pre-implementation compliance measures, ESA PICM. All right. So, let me find my script. It's a lot. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the application must provide their name and full mailing address if they wish to be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code. The city zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact, or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to rock, raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue, precludes appeal to the city council or the land use board of appeals, or to seek damages in circuit court due to the condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the planning, may ask the council for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance, to a time and date certain, or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony. Does any counselor need to declare a conflict of interest, or ex parte, or personal bias at this time?
No.
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 No. Ask the audience, is there any, are there any challenges to the council's ability to make an impartial decision? Raise your hand. I see none raised, so that's over. Chad, will you read the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And actually, I am going to bring in Mr. Garrett Phillips, who's online, our contract planner for the city of Gearheart. And there is Garrett, right there. Are you all right with getting started, Garrett?
Yes. Let me know if you can't hear me, okay? All right, so, I'll try to offer you a brief introduction and just be available for questions after that. So, we've presented you with a draft ordinance, really comprising two different options. And the two options reflect two different goals. Option A is essentially to adopt the Oregon model floodplain ordinance. In order to make sure that the city of Gearheart is meeting the minimum flood risk reduction standards that are required not only by the state of Oregon and DLCD, but also by FEMA. So, option A is really oriented to making sure that we have the basic minimum flood risk safety measures in place. And DLCD and FEMA identified some deficiencies in that regard in our current ordinance in 2023. And we need to, we need to make those corrections. At the same time, we have another option, which includes that one I just talked about, but it also, it also addresses new requirements that FEMA has said most Oregon communities have to implement in order to protect endangered species within floodplains. And that's what we call the ESA PICM, the Endangered Species Act Pre-Implementation Compliance Measures. The effect of adopting option B on floodplain property is that when someone wants to develop, in addition to meeting the basic flood risk reduction standards, they also have to do things with their development to protect salmon habitat. So, that would include protecting trees that are over six inches in diameter. Not adding additional impervious surfaces and not adding additional fill volume to the floodplain. And, you know, any person, any property owner could, could do any of those things. They, they could remove trees, they could add driveways or, or buildings, for example, that's impervious surfaces, where they could potentially add fill in the form of foundation materials or, or dirt. But they would have to mitigate that and remove, remove material from the floodplain somewhere else in Gearheart, or somewhere else on that property. Or remove impervious surfaces, like an existing driveway, or manage the stormwater with a bio-swell, or some other facility that, that cleans the water before it flows to a creek. And they would have to plant trees to compensate for trees that they cut down. So, this is a, this would be definitely a new direction for floodplain management. And it is, it's one that, you know, communities throughout Oregon are grappling with. It would be, I, I would estimate that, that property owners in the floodplain who want to develop would find the regulations onerous and expensive and challenging to comply with. And FEMA has said that all communities have to implement these rules by July 31st of 2025. And so, we've been trying to wait about as long as we can to see if any new guidance comes out that says that we don't have to do this, or that we can wait longer. We scheduled planning commission hearings and had a hearing last month. And the planning commission's discussion and recommendation focused on a couple of issues. One is that the, the ordinance that FEMA wants communities to adopt is not completely consistent with Oregon's land use laws, which require that regulations on residential development only include clear and objective standards, rather than standards that require a substantial amount of judgment or discretion. And the model ordinance that FEMA wants communities to adopt, in a couple of regards, has some extra points of like judgment and discretion that staff or a planning commission would have to apply when a residential developer wants to develop in the floodplain. So, we have concerns about that. The planning commission is concerned about that. And there are larger communities, larger cities in Oregon that are working on potential solutions to try to make, to change the model ordinance to make it more clear and objective. And we're trying to keep track of, of, of when they publish something in that regard, and whether DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, you know, gives them any feedback on it. Instead of trying to invent that wheel here in Gearheart, we are going to try to learn, we'd like to try to learn from what other communities are doing. The second point of concern that the planning commission had is just that there have been some challenges, or a challenge has been filed in federal court to FEMA's requirement. And there have been some developments in that regard suggesting that FEMA and the challenger named Oregon, Oregonians for Floodplain Management, I think is their name, are entering into negotiations in the coming weeks. And I don't know if the subject of those will be the deadline of July 31st, or if it will be the actual requirements contained within the model ordinance. In any case, planning commission recommended, after their deliberations, that city council adopt only option A until the clear and objective standards issue can be resolved. And so, you know, staff put forward the same recommendation, essentially suggesting that city council either adopt option A now, or that you continue the hearing for another month to see if there's any new developments with FEMA and Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development, and the challengers, any new guidance, any new requirements that come out in the next month. And if, you know, if you, if you wanted to, if you, if it was important to you to meet the July 31st deadline, you could adopt in July instead of now. And I think I'm going to leave it at that, and I'm happy to answer questions about the, the PICM requirements, and, and how that might be experienced by property owners, or what the consequences might look like of missing the July 31st deadline, what FEMA's process is for following up with communities after that date. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jared. So, you don't know what would happen if we did it in August, the beginning of August? It's just a question of whether FEMA decides to jump down her throat, or just go along with everybody else?
I can address this.
Yeah. Okay.
So, what FEMA was looking for is, is substantial work towards this, which again isn't clear and objective, what that means, but that's why literally every meeting for the last year, Garrett and I have brought this up, and kind of given you progress reports. There are a lot of people that believe, I think with good reason, that this was a priority of the last presidential administration, and this is not a priority of the current presidential administration. There have been indications from Representative Benz, who's the Eastern Oregon Republican Representative, you know, has a pretty strong relationship with the administration, that these are going away. That said, a lot of the leadership at FEMA that oversaw this program is no longer at FEMA. And so, clear communication is not something that we've been able to get. We specifically, Garrett and I raised this issue that this seems to contradict the governor's bill on housing. And so, if, if we're required to do something by the federal government that isn't violation of the state law, and we give someone a right to potential action against this in circuit court, that makes us extremely concerned. And when we asked FEMA about that, they said they wouldn't opine on, I'm paraphrasing, they would not opine on anything related to state law. So, basically completely punted that concern. So, it, it has been, it kind of puts us in a catch 22. And at that point, my gut reaction is that I think that, that all the states' laws are in place, this seems like, like it's in flux. And so, maybe give them a little bit more time to either have this negotiated outcome that's happening right now between FEMA and the plaintiffs that are suing FEMA in federal court. So, that, that was part of the reason that we recommended to the planning commission that they adopt the provisions to bring us into compliance with the DLCD best practices, but wait on the, the FEMA stuff. Because what I wouldn't want to happen is, we adopt the FEMA rules, then they go away, we get a land use application, this is in our code, and you know, we can't just, it takes a whole process to amend our code. And so, that, that's initially why I thought by for taking these and adopting the one and holding off on the other was kind of a prudent approach. And again, you know, we can continue this, we can continue the FEMA portion of this to a time certain, or we could have a, which would be the first meeting of July, and we could continue that to a time certain, and have a special city council meeting, once we get a little, little more clarity on this. But again, what I would say is, from a legal risk perspective, it's a good idea to, to adopt the DLCD, and then we could potentially have a problem either way unless this gets pulled by FEMA. So, I, I would recommend we wait a little bit longer before we adopt this.
Okay. So, you're, I don't know if you have the signed paperwork, we just leave the record open and adopt at least option A in July if we have to, but then we're just going to wait and see?
Yeah, and we just, we would adopt the DLCD language. We would be consistent with what the planning commission did, which was adopt A, and continue, and you'd continue the B, because we just don't know whether we need to adopt that or not. And again, this was something where we expected language in July of last year, we didn't get it, we expected it in December. We finally got some language, then we started hearing that people were saying to pull it. And it's just, it's really not been ideal. But, you know, that's, that's just how things happen sometimes. So, we're trying to be as, as flexible as we can.
Okay. Is, okay, we haven't, I don't know if it's a proponent or opponent that wishes to speak, and that's where we go next, isn't it, Peter?
Absolutely.
So, I'm going to call Shannon, Shannon Smith?
Is she online?
Are you online, Shannon?
She is not that I can see.
Okay. One more time, Shannon Smith, are you going to speak? No? Okay. Are there, and since I don't know if she's a proponent or opponent, I'm going to go to, are there any other proponents in the audience? Are there any opponents in the audience? Are there anyone wishing to make neutral comments in the audience or online? Please raise your hand at this time for anything and everything. I see a hand raised.
Hi, counsel, just wanted to note, I submitted written.
Name and address, please.
Sorry, Todd Miller, 762 Second Street, Gearheart. Just wanted to recognize, I submitted written commentary in favor of the adoption, both, I guess we, the all of Plan B, and that should be in your, in your packet.
Okay. That would be in our written correspondence, which.
That is correct.
Will be in the council minutes and not in the hearing, because it's not in our packet for the hearing, right?
It will be submitted with the hearing information, but it is a late edition.
Okay.
But it will be submitted.
Okay, Todd, that's going to be a late edition.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have any neutral comments? Do we have an applicant's rebuttal? Okay, I need a motion. I'd really like to see number one in our options of page 77, to continue the hearing to July, leaving the record open with the intention of adopting at least option A in July, and perhaps option B if the July 31st deadline remains in effect, and if option B can be made consistent with clear and objective standard requirements.
Did you make that motion?
No, I'm just asking for it to be said that way.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue the hearing to July, leaving the record open with the intention of adopting at least option A in July, and perhaps option B if the July 31st deadline remains in effect, and if option B can be made consistent with clear and objective standard compliance. I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion amongst the council? Hearing nine, well? Sorry, did you say something?
Yeah, I have a question for Peter.
Okay.
So, the concern that this might be in contrast to Governor Kotex's housing goals. My question is, are not those, are those goals not workforce, primarily for workforce housing?
No, if you look at the definition of workforce housing, it is not constrained by income, so, or rather, the term that they use is middle housing, which isn't really different, if any housing is necessary. And what people have said is that all housing is necessary. So, that means middle housing would apply to virtually anything. So, those rules are really broad as far as what we're required to allow. And where we've normally seen what would be in the FEMA language regarding like cut fill, that's not uncommon to have a, a net zero cut fill. But what is far more uncommon is to have limitations on the impervious surface outside of the floodplain area, and so that's what's going to be really difficult for developers to add needed housing while, so like, if, there's something called a LOMAR, which is a letter of map provision for a floodplain area, and then a CLOMAR, which is a conditional letter of map provision. And so, it's, if you're going to add a certain amount of soil to the site to build the house, fill, then you would have to do a cut in the floodplain lower. And then the idea is, it would be a net zero impact or a negative, like you require them to cut more than they fill, which is not uncommon in jurisdictions. But again, counting like the roof of a house's impervious surface, or their landscaping is impervious surface compared to like the natural state of things, like time and memoriam, that's not something that we've necessarily seen before as far, as part of this. Because in the past, FEMA has been just very focused on the floodplain itself. So, not areas outside of the floodplain, yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was like, I, I need to continue this, because I just want to be clear about this.
Yeah.
So, you said needed housing. So, you're saying that all housing is considered needed housing?
Yeah, so if you look at the, if you look at how middle housing is defined or not defined, and I would say it's kind of not defined, then virtually any housing is needed housing.
Okay, so, just to be clear, so, if somebody in Gearheart wants to build a million dollar house in the floodplain, that's considered needed housing?
So, if they want to build a house that is within our, all of our standards, like step back and side setbacks and all of that, then, and it's below our maximum height and complies with all our clear and objective standards, and at the end of the day, it wouldn't matter if it's worth 300,000 or 3 million, it would be allowed by right.
I'd say that, I'll just offer, the statute specifically says all, all housing within an urban growth boundary, and it, it lists single family homes without qualification as part of that.
Is that good?
Yes.
Hang on.
And then I just wanted to, to be clear, this doesn't just apply to homeowners, this applies to us also, if we need to do road repairs, that's.
If you want to add a gravel patio, or you want to add a concrete, or whatever it is, anything that could be considered impervious, you could, under these FEMA regulations, be required to do a cut. And I have been through the LOMAR, CLOMAR, LOMAR process before in other jurisdictions, and it lasts months. It's not a, I mean, this, this, and, and that, this was like pre-pandemic that I was dealing with these. And so, yeah, this could add, you could have a minor alteration of your yard, and it could add a year, and like frankly, good luck getting through that process without a really skilled land use attorney.
Right, but I'm talking about repaving out here, over on Pacific Way, on F Street, up on Gearheart. If we have to repave anywhere near the Neocoxi, this applies to us as well, correct?
Yeah, it can be, it certainly can be read in that manner. And that's, that's again, what we're struggling with, is that it kind of feels like a lot of this was thrown together to meet a deadline, and without any of the collaboration that we would normally hope to see. So, there, there are areas of this that are internally contradictory, and then there are areas in this where it's contrary to state law. So, that's why we've been really reluctant to move forward with adoption unless we have to. And the reason we would have to is because FEMA could take the position that if we don't adopt it, then we would lose our flood insurance, which we don't want to do. And so, we're kind of in a, between a rock and a hard place, and I would hope that we would get some clarity either from, from, in terms of, and this is Oregon specific. This, this, this FEMA adoption is specific to Oregon. So, the other states aren't dealing with it, we are, and, and I just hope we have some sort of resolution, whether it's clear and objective standards that we can utilize, or whether it's a different date, or whether it's pulling it in totality.
Are there any other questions for Peter or discussion? We have a motion in the second. All those in favor of delaying until July, keeping the, leaving the record open, and possibly adopting at least option A in July, if not also option B? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I believe it's unanimous. All right, yes. So, the hearings continue until our July meeting? Peter, do I, I can't close the meet, the hearing now, right?
No, we're leaving it open for evidence, so we just continue with the meeting as if we're going to revisit it in 30 days.
Okay, the problem is, we're notice for starting the public hearing for the city council on the possible heat for the state revenue and everything for 7 o'clock.
Well, we still have the proposed.
Oh, you're absolute.
We still have the number.
Yes, thank you, Derek. Thank you very much, okay. So, this meeting, this hearing is continued. We are now going to go to our proposed public safety building options. And. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing regarding proposed separated and consolidated public safety building options in the city of Gearheart. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the city council to hear this matter at this time? Raise your hand on screen, anyone in the audience may raise their hand if they object. Seeing none will move on. Does any city council member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Hearing none? Is there any additional correspondence? No. Is there any other additional correspondence for this?
There was a letter.
There was a letter. From an opponent.
Okay.
And so loose, I put it. From Tom, from Tom.
From Tom, the Tom letter, it's right here. Okay. Another file. Tom, would you like to read your letter?
Yes, I would.
Thank you very much.
This is our.
Your name and address please.
Tom Teese. PO Box 2831, Gearhart, Oregon. I believe we owe a debt of gratitude to our volunteer firefighters. We have been so focused on cost, graphics and building blocks. I feel we may have forgotten the most important issue of our fire department, our firefighters. They are our first responders, they give us so much of themselves to support our community. It is our turn. To return that selfless support they give so freely. We should be focused on the heart and soul of our fire department. They aren't just firefighters. They are our first responders to medical calls. Car wrecks, fires, and the list goes on, often before an ambulance arrives. Takes a special kind of person to be a firefighter. Someone willing to go into a raging infernal to save people, pets and property. But that's not all they do. Imagine responding to a car accident where the cars are so untangled. You can't tell where one begins and the other one ends. Or the medical call of a husband of 50 years who collapsed and they're doing CPR while his wife launches. Pulling a dog out of fire, living lifeless and being able to save him as his family launches. Helping somebody out in their wheelchair that fell out. Responding to a wildfire in our sand dunes. This is just the tip of the iceberg. Sometimes calls have really tragic endings. Remember the plane crash in Gearhart? Remember how they spent days helping to clear trees after 2007 storm? With some firefighters actually sleeping in the station to respond more quickly. Day or night. They are there. Volunteer firefighters support our community in many different facets. Couple of examples are they are there handing out hot dogs and hamburgers on the Fourth of July instead of being with their families. They are there putting out Easter dates for little ones at Easter. They are heart and soul of our community. They are there. They are our volunteers. It is not like the way it used to be many years ago where all you had to do is go into the fire department and say, hey. I want to try to do a volunteer fire department. And that's all you were. They toss you on a hat, now you're a firefighter. Now it's fire and rescue and all the many certifications that volunteers need to have before they can go do anything. Hours and hours of training. Now you have to be certified by state guidelines plus yearly training and schooling to keep up your certifications. They are our first responders. When something happens, when you have fallen or having heart problems or you're in a car accident. They are there. They will be the ones that are cutting you out of your car so you can get loaded into an ambulance. And directing traffic so the ambulance can get to you. They are the ones that are helping you lifting you up. Onto an ambulance girding when you're down. They are certainly the ones. That have the fire hose in their hands putting out a house fire. They are there. They are there and we need them the most. We need to take this vote into November and let the voters decide if we have a new fire station or not. Any delay is just going to cost us money and we've seen that. Thank you to all of our volunteers and paid firefighters. You are truly appreciated. Really are. Same thing with police. Buildings are about cost. Firefighters are the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, are there? Any other proponents? That wish to speak? I see a Tom, Eric Halpern.
Yes, thank you. Well, I'd like to start by thanking Mayor Smith, the city council, city manager suite. As well as Chief Como, Chief Gregory, DC Park and Public Works Director McFadden. For serving the residents of Gearhart and for your diligence and continuing to provide our community. A new public service building.
Eric, I hate to stop you at the beginning, but could you give us your name and address?
My apologies. No worries, thank you. Eric Halpern, PO Box 2864. I believe you have listened to the residents and learned from your experience in 2022. And you have led a fair and open and transparent process to find the path to bring a new public service building to realization. You brought in qualified and capable professionals, the Clash Group and FFA. To work with the community and guide us through the process of developing a plan. To replace our aged out fire and police stations. Our current fire station is decrepit, unsafe, below standards and no longer functional. It puts at risk the people who work there and puts all of us residents at risk who depend on them and the work they do. Personally, I'm not happy we're building a new public service building or public safety building in the current location. I think it's unwise to build critical infrastructure in a tsunami zone. But it was made clear that we have no other alternative. So in spite of my feelings about that, I will support this project. To my fellow community members who insisted they wanted a new fire station, but only if it was built in the current location. But who are concerned about the cost, I feel it is now time also for you to compromise. It is expensive to build in the current location. The reasons for the expense of building downtown have been clearly laid out by the design group. But people wanted it there, so now we have to pay for it there. With regard to the projected cost of roughly $33 million, yes, that's a lot of money. And that number can seem imposing and overwhelming. But I'd like to break this down again in the manner that was done at the last town hall. At that town hall, they projected a median priced home in Gearhart with a market value of approximately $750,000. Which would have an assessed value of roughly $350,000. The increase in taxes of approximately $3 per thousand is just over $1,000 per year. $1,000 may still be an imposing number, but let's break that down a little further. $1,000 a year is about $83 a month. What is $83 a month? That might be equal to one dinner out for a couple. It might be a lot less than one dinner out in a month. $1,000 a year is $2.74 a day. Think of all the things that we all spend $2.75 a day on. I would like to think that we can all find $2.75 a day to make sure our community is properly protected by its first responders. If your house is less than median price, it's even less than $2.75 per day. And if your home is above media, maybe a market value of maybe a million dollars or more. That alone should be an indicator you have the ability to pay the taxes that protect you and your valuable asset. And no matter the value of your home or the amount of tax you'll be assessed. Is just like insurance, we have to pay to protect ourselves, even if we never need the service ourself. Or need the service itself. And now that we've gone through the rigorous planning and design process, it's time for Gearhart to come together as a community and make this a reality. We must have a new public service building. Public safety building, I'm not even sure what the S stands for in there. What is it, Chad, is it safety or service?
Safety.
Thank you, public safety building. We cannot kick this down, kick this can down the road any longer. We're all familiar with the old adage that the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago and the next best time is now. Now is not only the best time, but it is well past time for Gearhart to replace the fire station. I urge everyone in Gearhart to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Okay. Are there any other proponents?
I don't know if I'm a proponent, Terry Graff, 302 South Ocean. We've heard a lot of numbers thrown around that $33 million seems to be the price of the project, but that's just the price of the construction. And one thing that has never come up at this meeting is what is going to cost for the bond? And I did some quick research today on Google and I don't know how accurate it is. But a 10 year bond at today's interest rate would be $5,700,000. If you have a 20 year bond, it's another $15 million. That's the interest that you're going to pay on this 33 million. So when you, Chad, when you do these numbers, are you basing them on 33 or are you basing it on almost 50 million?
33 with the knowledge that we will be paying interest and all of that. So in the long term, over 20 years, you're about accurate. I, I'm not exactly, but it's close.
So I think you need to do your research and let the public know that this isn't a $33 million project. This is close to a $50 million project. Because on today's interest rate that I got off Google hammered eyes jumps out to almost $50 million. And I think you need to do your homework and let the public know what reality is.
Okay, Terry, thank you very much. I think that would be neutral.
Pardon?
I think that would be a neutral comment.
Hey.
It's information that we.
Always neutral, I never take a side.
Right. Thank you. Okay, are there any other opponents or proponents wishing to speak? This, we don't have a staff summary or anything. No, Ken. Wow.
How about another neutral comment?
Okay.
If this doesn't pass in November. What's the backup plan?
Name and address.
Oh, Kathy Graff, 302.
Option.
Yeah, so if it doesn't pass and there's a big possibility that's not, we all were realistic about this. Because it hasn't passed two other, three other times anyway. Is there already a discussion about another plan?
Okay, first of all, I can tell you without a doubt, there's been no decision to go for a bond in November.
Okay.
That has not come up for discussion now. This time, all we're doing is taking public input. And then we're going to talk about it, we're. What's our timeline? We're going to talk about it again in, in July.
July and or August, depending on how things work.
So we are still trying to formulate what we're going to do. We're waiting and hoping to have a poll. At least one. Find out what the voters are going to say and how they're leaning right now. Because if it means going until May of next year because we need to go reach out and talk to people. That's what we have to do because as far as I'm concerned, I do not want to be a mayor with a failed bond. You know, I. It's not. It's not something I want. I want this thing to pass. Whatever it is that we do, I want it to pass. And if it takes a little while longer, then that's what it will take. And Peter, we do have something about polling coming up?
Yeah, I can, during my attorney report, I was planning on providing more information, I can do that now.
Odd. You know. Why don't you do it now because we've got 15 minutes before we can even start the counseling?
Okay, so I've had a number of conversations with very experienced political strategists and. Someone that's done a lot of polling, Paige Richardson, who has done. Successful bonds campaigns in a number of jurisdictions and then has been. Like there was recent, I've worked with her though, it was probably 10 years ago by now. And who also Lamb Week. Reported recently that, that a number of prominent Portlanders who also happen to have houses in Gearhart. Are utilizing her for some campaign activities. So I asked her if she would potentially be interested in. Doing, you know, at least getting up to the information that we would need so that, that you guys could make an informed decision about whether to move forward in November or not. She said she absolutely would. Be interested, she has availability to come here on the 20th of this month. Or she's, she has other availability via Zoom. But if, if people want to do an in-person kind of open house or something. The 20th is the date she has this month with work. And then the, the other thing is it's been a while since I ordered any polling. And like everything else, the price has gone up significantly. So the, the cost of getting a, a poll from a Davis Evitz, you know, D H M type of company. Is probably going to be around $20,000. Which was a surprise because I was expecting eight to 10, so I had to pick my job off of Florida, but yeah. And, and because we have a smaller number of voters and because we've already done through Clash some other work. It, that price might go down, but I was told to put a pin in at 20,000, so.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Peter, really appreciate it. Does anyone on the council have any questions for Peter about polling?
Did you discuss any kind of a timeframe?
Yeah, so I, I said that I, I think we would need to do the polling in July. And I said that it's possible that it will be November, it's possible that it would be May, it's possible we wouldn't go out at all. I don't know what's going to happen with inflation and everything else. I mean, there are a lot of unknowns, but I think the benefit of getting a poll is it would get us at least a baseline number. So that it would inform you guys how much community support is. And then my rule of thumb for a poll where we're asking people to open up their wallets is you want to be. I don't recommend going to the ballot without like a 58% approval, somewhere like that. Because I've seen. It all, the vote always seems to underperform the polling just because I think some people are reluctant to acknowledge a pollster that they don't want to pay for it and then don't want to pay for it, so. The other thing Paige was going to look at is she was going to look at kind of the voter turnout traditionally in Gearhart in November versus May. I think it's probably pretty consistent. But that's another thing is that obviously if, if there's going to be a. In their city spending limitations, it'll go into effect as soon as you put it on the ballot. So if you pass in August, at that point, anything out of the city needs to be completely neutral. And anything campaign related would need to go through a campaign, an official camp, Secretary of State recognized campaign committee. And so. You know, the, the question is could. Could that committee effectively get out its messaging between now and November or is there more voter education that would need to happen? And I think that if Paige digs in a little, some of that will become. More apparent, so that's. I think that I would be really reluctant. I think that I would be really reluctant to recommend that we put it on the ballot without strong polling. Because I, I agree with the mayor that if we put it out and it's a no vote, we're looking at two to three years before we revisit it. And just in the last few years, the cost of construction has increased tremendously. Not just here, but in every city I represent, stuff's coming in at 2X of what it was, you know, three, four years ago.
Okay, would you state your name and address, please?
George and Ringer, P O Box 134, Gearhart. Um, so the survey, would this just be, if you were backing up to the six projects that you were giving items to, itemization to, would those be a part of the survey or only the, the choice of one and two?
Well, I think that it would be up to the holster to develop the questions, so I can't say exactly what those would be. But I think that it would be, and I think there's some other data that will be really helpful to voters, um, beyond the, um, assessed value. Like we have an idea of what the cost will be for assessed value, which is different from real market value. But then also the combined assessed value of Gearhart occupied housing units versus overall whole so that we have a better idea of who's, um, you know, where the money is generated from. And then I think the other thing we're looking at is in addition to the city, there's also a district. And I think that districts, the district actually on a, or assessed value pays higher than, than a, a city homeowner pays. But then the, the question, another question would be, how could they participate in this? And whether, um, we would want something that's on the district ballot, you know, at the same time that the city goes out, because that could also impact the total number. And then there, there have been some, um, indications that there would be people that would be willing to donate to it or, um, participate in it. Um, whether that's like a one-time donation or whether that is, a sort of fee. Um, again, I think that there, there are a number of things now that we actually have a total number for the building that, that we could look at it. Um, and then we had, oh, and I'm blanking on their name. The, the jurisdiction in the south of us that, um, a man's Anita was able to qualify for some state funds. And so we're reaching out to the state to see what funds might be available. Um, yeah.
So we would revisit like just to do a basic fire safety building, not anything else? If we had to address just the safety building or the fire department portion, would that be an option that's offered to the voters at all?
Versus a combined?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I mean, that's something that could be on the poll. So I think that, again, the, the poll, the poll questions haven't been developed yet. So that's all, I think part of the purpose throughout this process is to get feedback so that this council could make an informed decision about whether to move forward or not and how it would look moving forward.
I mean, instead of waiting to get 100% of everything, is there a way to maybe portion things to get acceptance from the community of at least improving our fire department?
If, if you, if you take down that building, we have to account for public works in some way because that's part of the building. It's a fire station, public works building. So that at least has to be.
But I saw where it was like 8.5 million for the police department. Uh, when I was seeing the graphs, they kind of sectioned off certain portions. So it looked like the fire department portion was more about half of that 33 million. So that's kind of my question. If, as you were saying at the last meeting, if OSHA came in, they could find us maybe $2,500 a day for what they're seeing right now. If we were to just fix that part of this, at least get something done if we can't, if nobody wants to commit to the 33 million. I'm just kind of throwing that out there.
Yeah, I think that's more of a plan.
Of the survey.
A Plan B, you know, it's very.
Right.
Asking, asking about a Plan B.
I don't believe. We have not talked in depth about a Plan B. We're trying to just get to the point where we can find out if we even have a Plan A, if people will accept or deny the plan. And what? We started off going, it's public input is what we're going to base everything on. That's what we've been doing and we need to have that public input from a poll to tell us, yes, go ahead or no, but let's not go ahead with this. Let's either do more outreach or come up with a Plan B because that's the way I see it.
So we'll have the ability to maybe have input to the survey? Is that?
I don't know how the surveyor works. I, I have not spoken to Paige.
Okay. I, I feel like I can answer some of your questions, maybe a little bit more specifically. You're wondering, now that we know how much it's going to cost, can we back up and then go back to where we're revisiting what we're doing and which options we're going to choose because two options we're given, you know, it came down to two options. Here's, here's the thing, as Pauline was explaining, that is all one connected building and Public Works is not a terribly stable building in and of itself. But the real problem we have is we have the fire station that I said it was built for 1950s fire trucks, but it was built for 1950s fire trucks in 1958 when there were no standards about size, how much size you have to have. Things have changed now because there have been so many crushing injuries with firefighters being crushed by vehicles maneuvering within buildings when there's not enough space or things being stored in appropriately because there's no space. They tend to store vertically. Um, so OSHA since then has come out with very specific standards about how much space you have to have around your fire trucks. So the problem that we have now is that our building that was built in 1958 to, for 1950s fire trucks is no longer even large enough by today's standards to house 1958 fire trucks or 1950 fire truck. So we have to make it larger and the problem that we have is with the footprint over there. If you're going to make that building larger and you're going to be able to house larger apparatus when they come out on the street, they're going to need a larger apron so that they can make that turn. They practically end up in the front yards across the street as it is with that little apron and with our small little apparatus. But if we ever got normal apparatus, they need the larger turning radius out front. They need the longer apron. The whole building needs to move and there's no way to do that without touching public works. Also, the other problem is trying to dig down that 65 feet. And then if, even if we wanted to try and maintain that pole farm and not do anything with that pole farm, that would, I, there's almost no way to do it. But since the last meeting, we've had a lot of great questions from people like that. And the reason we broke out those numbers was because people were, well, I want to compare what is, you know, what is Cannon Beach paying for their police department compared to what you're talking about? But it was misleading for them to split up and now it could be misleading for, for that reason to imply that we could do one without the other. At bare minimum, if we touch that building, we're touching public works. And, um, really, if, if we're going to do it, that's where the real money is, is in the foundation and doing that work. It's not in just, you know, the fire. If we just cut out a police station and we're kicking that cam down the road and that's going to be very expensive. There's going to be no cheaper time to do this than now. And, and that is, again, we had, nobody has decided. The mayor said what he wants to see happen. Each one of us will have a chance to speak about it a little bit later in this meeting. Um, but I, I think that we're all, we're all equally concerned about the price. It's, it's a scary price and yet not doing anything is also scary. We're all talking about price, but really we should be talking about what is, what's going to happen in our community if we don't do this? I mean, what, what, just like you're saying, what is our Plan B if this doesn't work? Because it's very possible that people could say, no, we don't want to spend that money. And then how do we make our, our community safe?
Which, and there is one other point. This isn't about the fire station alone or the fire station in Public Works because it figured that, it piggybacks on the fire station. We also have a police department that is in substandard offices. I mean, you just go back there and take a look and you go, how can they actually work in the, and this has been remodeled recently. It's just a disgrace. But it's something that needs to be done and.
Right.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. When, when, when we had the meeting where we presented the six options and then they voted it down to two, the reason they did that is because it would cost us far too much money to have them do a workup on all six of those options and find out the price. It costs us a significant amount of money for them to narrow down to two. And now, you know, if going forward, it would be just the one. Um, if we were to back up and have them do it on all six so we could do the eeny meeny miny moe, we don't have that kind of money. We're, we're getting to the point to where we've got to, we've, we've, we've done what, we've, we've eliminated locations, we've eliminated, you know, options, we've eliminated what we're down to. We don't have a whole lot of options left. And we either pay for it or we don't. And then we need to figure out what our insurance is going to have, what was going to happen to our insurance.
Okay, I'm going to.
Hi, TJ McConnell, 3007, Kama. Hey, uh, I, I love the discussion, but I don't hear anybody addressing what's new. What are you taking to the voter that they didn't vote down a few years ago at the, the number that was a third than the number it is now? Do you honestly think that this has any chance whatsoever to be passed at 33 or 34 million? When, when in fact, there's been some discussion here that it was the location. It wasn't just the location. It was the amount of money at 13 to 14. I mean, I, I don't know how you arrived at this with, with paying, paying to have a counselor put together a package for three times the money. I, I don't know. You never get it passed. If I was sitting there, I'd, I'd be scratching my head going, that there is no way this ever, ever under any circumstances is going to pass because the last one didn't pass. And you seem to ignore the fact that money's a big part of it. No, no matter how you break it down, whether it's eighty-eight bucks and, and not dinner like the, the gentleman said earlier. Right, come on. This doesn't pass the straight face test.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
John Zimmerman, 408 West Cursel. Excuse me, I've got albums here. I want to voice a, a support of what Terry just said. He has made a very excellent point. You better be careful about how you start throwing numbers out. And those numbers better be accurate because the starting point is huge, as TJ has said. And they need to be all in costs. As Terry suggested, cost of care for the, the bond and everything else. I think too, there's a perception in your community that you're sort of boxed in. You've got yourself boxed in. You've spent, uh, about 208,000. I read your reserve fund, uh, statements. In other words, you've taken, these are the building reserve funds from about 300,000 down to about 100. So there's a lot of people questioning, well, if they don't go forward with this, do you mean they just piss that money off? Pardon my language. People are asking, you know, what's, what, what's there, isn't there an alternative?
There has to be an alternative.
I agree. And so there is a question too of somewhere in your engineering design process, somebody established special needs and assessed those needs. And there is an assumption in the community that those needs assessments drove the design, the engineering, hence the cost. It's pretty simple. So is there a, a level of compromise on your needs? Can you ask for a little bit less and get the cost down? Have you given the community all the options? You have a station called Hurtic. It can be expanded and it's not in the inundation zone. It does not have the same design criteria and expense. You could leave a little substation here so you could have emergency, at least one pumper here. So there are other options and I think people are screaming right now, give us all the options. Just don't throw out a $34 million bill. And so the messaging is important from here on up for you folks. If you want to get this thing done, I would suggest that you nominate somebody to be your primary spokesman. And that's, that person is the messenger for all of you. So you control your message. But, and then as to the survey, you know, we haven't even gotten, or I haven't, maybe I'm remiss, but I haven't seen the results of the opinion surveys that were sent out by your consultants. Have those been released, those results? If they haven't, they should be. People should have access to that. And then one final note. When you do do your survey, can you make it simple? Just yes or no? Don't indoctrinate us anymore. We have been indoctrinated for now, what, four or five years? People, people are much different here. We've got a lot of very professional, accomplished people. And they're not, they don't need to be treated as children. They need to be educated. A lot of them are very experienced, very successful business people that have taken a lot of risks and done a lot of. And they know what it takes and they know intuitively what's your employee is the reason. So don't, don't sell your public short.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to make a comment during this period? Seeing.
Right here.
Sorry, I'm Robert Corner.
Ramona F.
Patricia Roberts.
Name and address, please.
Patricia Roberts, Chancito, 69 Ocean, Gearhart. Jack made many points that I did. I think we should consider the main station being a hurtet, out of the inundation zone, cut down on the expenses. What, whatever you need here, which is a medics. Look at this. We're all old. We need medics there. We don't need necessarily three pump trucks. But if you can rebuild one, so you can have your response time to seaside, the main station, those are good.
Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
Mary, can I?
Yes, you may.
Purely factual information. So there's a, there's a national entity that calculates your fire insurance for residences. And what they look at is response time from the station and they look at the equipment at that station. So I don't know what the distance is from hurtet to people's houses versus the distance here from here to people's houses. I don't have an opinion about how to meet the fire need here in Gearhart. But if you start removing apparatus from one building and you put it in a building that is a far longer response time, then I believe it's five different levels that, that if you're at level five, you pay X. If you're at level one, you pay Y. And again, it's apparatus and response time is calculated. Um, that is going to impa- impact people's fire insurance cost for their house.
Can I respond by that? So, um, the, and the Gearhart Rural Fire District owns that property up there and owns that building. They have to maintain that building. It's their fire district building. So what you're suggesting is that either we ask them to, to willingly, the, the, the folks in the rural fire district to step up and agree to enlarge their building that they've already paid for, that they feel is adequate and, and what they have to maintain in order, you know, to meet criteria for their area. Or we, Gearhart, have to agree to pay for this building to be up there. Because if we're going to pay for it, it's not within our city limits. So that's what you, those are the two options. I, I, if I'm understanding you correctly.
I think you just made the case that we should combine both districts and spread those incremental costs over more people, driving your assessment rate down. And as to insurance, Peter, last time in 2022, we heard all kinds of fear that we're going to lose. all kinds of fear that we're gonna lose our insurance or our insurance rates were gonna go up. And so some of us, independent of each other, called our insurance companies and they referred us to their central headquarters. I called four. Of those four, two didn't even know Gearhart had a fire department. They raided it off the seaside. So if response time's an issue, now, that's two years ago, so things could have changed. But my insurance, actually my fire insurance, gone down, out. But I do think you need to consider very, very, very closely that there is an option that you could combine two fire, two fire districts. You could take your increased costs, whatever that is, by expanding Hurtic. And you could spread it over a much greater base of people. It's called rate beds.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, me, Jan, seven seven four seven, great. We can build some towers like I suggested before. They would actually be for immediate folks to evacuate to. They've got beautiful ones in Japan. We could have that built here for pretty cost effective and one and maybe two. And it could be viewing platforms as well. So again, save public lives, make it cost effective, and uh we'll probably go with it.
Thank you, Sean.
Okay. Mayor, may I just address one thing? The Gearhart Rural Fire Protection District is one government agency. This here is a city fire department. They contract with the city of Gearhart for fire protection. Okay, they contract our chief to be their chief, right?
They are awesome.
This would be like asking the city manager in the seaside, okay, to merge the two fire cars together. The discussions that I've had with them there's no way in the world that they they're gonna merge, not in the foreseeable future.
They haven't been provided the option to their rate pairs.
Joey Daniels works on a two dollar and twenty-five cent per thousand on measure on a five-year levy. For everybody and every business can seaside. That's just for the fire department. That doesn't include police, doesn't include public works, doesn't include anything. Just the fire department.
So what's, he services how many people? And how many people do you serve?
They run about sixteen hundred calls a year. We run about eight hundred.
Talking about populations, how many people does seaside serve? Versus how many people
We don't have that information, do we?
Well, it might be a good idea to get it.
Okay, all right. So I'm not gonna let this run any longer. So at this time, I make a motion that we close this public hearing and move on to our next public hearing. May I have a second, please? Is there any discussion amongst the council members? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now we're gonna start with a public hearing. Um, I'll wait until some people who want to leave. I got it.
I have to restart the online meeting as well.
Uh, you you want to go ahead and restart here?
Yep, I have, yes, I have to.
Okay, folks online, so Christie's gonna probably make this announcement anyway, but folks online, we have to restart this meeting. We'll do another recording. So we will be shutting this meeting down and you will be able to come back here. Uh, you can just
Right, no.
Use the send link.
Gotcha.
Okay.